It's 5:30. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If everyone could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone tonight and remind if anyone wants to address the commission under citizen comments, they need to fill out a request and turn it in to the city clerk prior to that time. So at this time, we'll consider adoption of the agenda. Have the commissioners reviewed the agenda? And any additions or modifications you desire?
I don't have any additions or modifications.
No, nor do I.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion concerning the adoption of the agenda.
I make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
The agenda first.
Or the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of adopting the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove item C from the consent agenda. C is in Charlie.
Okay. Any others?
None.
Okay, then do I have...you wanna make a motion?
Sure. I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A, B, and D.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Items for commission action. Let's return to item C from the consent agenda. Consider initiating text amendments to Appendix A, listing of permit and conditional uses and any related definitions in Article 4 of the zoning ordinance relating to microbreweries, bottling and canning soft drinks and carbonated water and beer, wine, and alcoholic beverages wholesale.
Mr. Mayor, I had talked to the city attorney about this. My wife and I have invested in the new microbrewery we're trying to get built downtown, so I would like to excuse myself for any discussion on this. So I'm gonna leave the room.
Or, you know, if you want, just wanna sit in and just not participate in the discussion.
I'll stay outside.
Okay? Okay. Do you wanna give a brief background to that, Kelly, so we can get a better understanding?
With the new microbrewery that would like to locate downtown, we do not have a zoning classification for that. And so we need to amend our permitted and conditional use table to include that. And also, in reviewing that, there were some other things that they were going to do. They wanna make some homemade sodas and things, and that wasn't included, so we need to modify that. And then we also found an error on the beer, wine, and alcohol beverages wholesale that doesn't really have anything to do with this, but it was allowed in one location in a C2 and another it was not allowed in a C2. So we just wanna correct this. This is actually a C3 zone, so that one doesn't relate to this, but I just wanna clean it up on that one.
Would you wanna explain so everyone will understand what a text amendment is?
A text amendment is when the zoning code is modified. Basically, the rules that apply to zoning. It...a text amendment can be initiated by the planning commission or the city commission. Since the planning commission meets the first Tuesday, it would be a delay, so I brought it to the city commission to initiate it so that I can publish the public hearing. Once it goes to the planning commission, then it goes to the city commission for final approval, and then the code will be changed. For this particular business, they will need to come back and file conditional use permits for the different uses that they're requesting. At that time, the property owners within 200 feet will be notified of the hearing at least 20 clear days, and it will be published in the paper, and that's before the planning commission. It goes to the planning commission, and then after a 14-day protest period, it goes to the city commission on their next meeting after that for final consideration for the conditional use permit. So it's gonna be a little bit of a process on this one.
So what happened is a business desired to locate in Independence. It wasn't in any definition. So you're correcting the planning and zoning ordinance to allow for them to exist.
Them or any other.
We're not making a special zone, a special exception. We're just basically updating our planning and zoning to cover all uses.
To include that use, which would apply to any other microbrewery as well. It doesn't just apply to theirs in any of those zones that we're including.
So then what we're doing is just setting the groundwork so the formal adoption of the text amendment can take place and then allow them to apply for the proper paperwork. Without this modification, they couldn't apply for a conditional use permit.
Correct, correct, correct.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Okay. With that, then, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that... That we adopt the...let me see, I'm trying to find it here. I move to initiate text amendments to Appendix A, listing of permitted and conditional uses and any related definitions in Article 4 of the zoning ordinance related to microbreweries, bottling and canning soft drinks and carbonated water and beer, wine, and alcoholic beverages wholesale.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now, items for commission action. Item A, consider adoption of the community-based strategic plan as drafted by Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, SPAC, from input by the citizens of Independence. Do we have the final print? I know the one in our packet still had draft on it.
Yeah, that's what it says until you adopt it. It'll say draft, and once you adopt it, we'll take that off and publish it and put it on the website.
So then, right now, if anyone has any modifications, we should do that now.
That's correct. If there's anything you really wanna change.
Any modifications?
I don't have any.
Further discussion about the strategic plan?
No.
I'd just like to comment thanks to the commission, to moving forward with this process. I think it's gonna be great for the City of Independence. It's now on city staff to start implementation, and we're already working towards that, so... But again, just thanks for supporting the community plan.
With that, with no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt the Independence Community-Based Strategic Plan as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, consider authorizing the Whiskey Creek Flood Mitigation Study by Trans Systems Incorporated and update on recently completed work. Can we do the update first and then we'll...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. We're not gonna do a full walkthrough with a ditch again, are we?
No.
He's trying to build the suspense.
The street department did some work on Whiskey Creek, and they started here at Oak and Beach before Looking North, after Looking North, cleaned up a little silt and some saplings there. This Sycamore Street, where it crosses under. And actually, the before picture's Looking South. You can see the arch, the brick arch back there. Then after picture's Looking North. It's the bank there that cleaned up.
So we're looking in different directions on the two pictures?
Yeah, it's mixed up when they took the picture. This is north side of Maple Street Bridge. Took out some silt there. There was a few driftwood or whatever you wanna call it. Worked on the south side this afternoon, and we'll get some pictures of that for next time. This is Looking West, facing west on the north side. And these pictures, Beach Street, Looking North, and this was the ninth. Crescent Circle, Looking North, and then Circle Drive, Looking North. And we were capturing some water there. Whoop, too far. And we're going to do some work tomorrow next to the U.P., where those culverts go under to the west. And when we work there, there has to be a U.P. person onsite, so I had to schedule that with them. We'll be doing a little work there.
Okay. Are you cleaning out any sediment within the culvert also?
The culvert under...
Under the streets.
Well, we can't reach under there. The only thing we could do probably is use the jet truck or something to blow it out or whatever. Yeah, that's an option.
Yeah. Still, it looks like you've made a big improvement, just making sure we get all the flow through it. And I noticed that Rock Creek on Penn Avenue, where the storm drain dumps out, there's a couple inlets that are collapsed, but that's sediment just about blocked, too. And that's right at the railroad right away.
It dumps right at the railroad, which is a U.P. spur, and they'll have to be onsite there. And then on the other side of that spur there will be a county, and I'll have to get to county to take that on down to Rock Creek and open that up.
I thought the tracks were the limit, and you're right at the right away for them.
I can do my work on the north side, and the county's gonna have to do their work on the south side to get it on down to Rock Creek.
We did have a request from a citizen before we go on into the other part of the presentation. Anita, would you like to comment concerning this part?
My concern, again, is still just the cleaning up of Whiskey Creek. I read in the paper last week where it's been 35 years that this issue has been on the back burner. And I sure hope that your commission turns around and does something with this. I mean, granted, the activity is noted in a few little areas, but I just hope this continues and maybe a problem is eliminated in the future. And I was just wondering what was gonna be doing... Because at last meeting, you said something about talking to the Corps of Engineers, and I wasn't sure if that had been approached or had been done yet. And wondering what their thoughts or actions were going to be on that as well.
Mike, has the Corps been contacted yet?
Yes, Sean can explain that.
Okay. Well, we can go over that when we get with Sean then. So, you know, I think what our concern is not only initially seeing that the culverts are opened up and cleaned out, but then establishing a maintenance schedule that periodically they'll be checked to make sure sediment doesn't come back in. So, you know, just a routine part of the study's gonna identify some other issues along the waterway, and then hopefully, when we get at the end, there'll be some recommendations on how to maintain, what kind of schedule, so that it is not just a one-time fix, but a permanent solution for the neighborhood.
Okay, so do you have a timeframe on any of this to go through forward, or...?
Yeah, that's...we're gonna have a presentation from Sean Turner with Trans Systems for a study of the area, and we'll talk about his schedule. And then look, of course, some of it's gonna deal with funding.
Well, I understand that. I know it's 35 years, and we're not anywhere else. We're at a standstill.
You've lived there 35 years?
I've lived there over 30.
And this is a regular occurrence?
Yes, sir, it is. And the last one was seven and a half or eight inches, seven and a half inches deeper.
Is it like an annual thing? Because I don't remember hearing about this before.
2007, my son's car was damaged, but in 2014, we lost both of our vehicles. This year, both, we move our vehicles. You can't sleep at night when the rain's coming.
Sure.
So you have to move your vehicles. And neighbors, family, and other people around, they lost a lot. And not to say more, but 35 years ago, you didn't have the schools up north. You didn't have the housing up north. You didn't have the assisted living up north. There was a lot that wasn't there.
Right.
And as it was indicated, we can't start at the top of it. We have to stop at the...start at the bottom to clear things up. We need to stop putting things at the top of it then and stop building up there. It's compounding it.
From the before pictures that Mike and David gave at the initial presentation to what's going on now, there should be a marked improvement as the rains come. You know, it looked like the culverts were severely restricted. So it should allow for better drainage, and you should see a decrease in the accumulation. That's not possibly gonna solve everything, but that's our first step that hopefully we can bring the level down. Then through the study, see the next steps and where the major problems are and which problems to address first.
How much rain was received on October the 9th for that picture right there at Circle Drive, Looking North?
It was under an inch.
That was under an inch. And my photos prove that, too, with an inch and three quarters, how it was across the road a couple years ago. I think it was 2017 when we presented those photos. And that's what my curiosity was. So, I mean, with an inch of rain, you're getting that, so with more rain, you're getting more.
Part of the problem with the area in that location, it's relatively flat, too. So the time lag for rain to run off, the flatter it is, the longer it takes. So there'll be a greater chance for ponding water. Let's...what we can do is cut the depth in the backup. So...
Just one more question. Has there been any cameras going down some of the water sewer, water drains or anything like that to see if there's any broken down lines that way?
Right now, I think they've been concentrating on cleaning the debris at the inlets, but that's part of, as far as I understand, part of the plan to check the condition of...
I thought about a year or two ago that when you came in and we had... I thought we had Terry go down there and run some cameras, didn't he? I don't know. I don't know if Terry's here, but... I was thinking a few years ago that you went and checked some of that for us.
I'd have to go back and look. I've been looking around for it. I would recall it.
I just know that one time it was... It was kinda...there wasn't anything in the Whiskey Creek, but it was flooding in our area on that street. And so that was another concern that was voiced to me about, could there be some collapsed lines? So, just another thought.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Sean. Turner? Forgot we had two Shans there. The second part will be the presentation of the proposal from Trans Systems.
Just a little lead-in, Mayor. We contacted Sean, he brought his Aaron, right?
Yeah.
Hydrologist down to the City of Independence, met with city staff, Craig, Kelly, me, Mike. And it was determined at that time, looking through the pictures, the event, it was a 200-year event that occurred. And as you know, we just do not have the capacity. And that's gonna flood, no matter what we did. So it is very important, and he agrees, as you do. We gotta get it flowing, but capacity is a huge issue. And therefore, what she just said is correct. We've had a lot of things happen up north, and he suggested the study. And that's what I have here. It does...it will be with big costs, which I think you're well aware of that at the end result. So with that, I'll let Sean talk to you and...
Okay, thank you, David. We did discuss with the Corps of Engineers possible funding mechanisms, particularly for the study first. And they're not aware of any type of funds currently available. That is, as you know, changes almost daily, it seems like, with federal funds. But...and if we did use core money for the study, we would have to meet the 100-year event. And basically, that study has previously been completed back in the 80s. The Corps did the study, which we discussed at the last meeting. It recommended improvements, or the improvements from Cherry Street to Sycamore Street. In today's dollars, to provide 100-year capacity would be a $9 million project.
I'm sorry?
A $9 million project. And today, the Corps of Engineers requires a cost-benefit analysis. So they look at $9 million, what the benefit there would be for that. So I don't believe there's enough houses benefiting from that project for it to obtain core funds, from my understanding. So what we did in this study, we do look again at the 100-year event to provide the capacity. The study would determine what improvements would be required for the 100-year event, update that cost estimate instead of going back to the old Corps study and just applying inflation. So it would have a new dollar amount for that. Then it would also look at lesser capacity improvements. And we didn't really put a number on that, like the 100-year event, but we basically just said 2 to 10, I believe, what improvements could be done in that drainage way, particularly south of Sycamore, that could provide those benefits. So it's a pretty detailed analysis, and that's why it is an expensive study. The price tag we have on the study is $44,648.
So have you talked to the Corps of Engineers? The property line, if it's determined by the location of the creek, it would be in the creek. So the property owner actually owns the creeks. So what is allowed by the Corps? And whose responsibility then is it to main the waterway?
Yeah, the...there's two types of core permits. There is a nationwide permit that basically allows for maintenance to be done, similar to what the city has done in those areas. They let you go in and cut trees off. They don't let you pull the trees up. And they let you remove sediment, and that's basically it. If you're going to do any more than that, you're going to have to do an engineering study or an engineering plan showing what those improvements are. Then the Corps gives you a special permit after reviewing that and mitigating any factors that they want, they would like to see changed. Then you get a special permit for that project called a 404 permit, and you're probably gonna have to look at impacts on the water surface elevations, and particularly in the 100-year flood. That's what they wanna see, is if you're screwing up the 100-year flood with your project. So if it basically, if it's a blue line stream like this is, then it's basically the property owner's responsibility to take care of that. And as we know, there's a lot of this area that is not owned by the city or the city does not have right of way, which causes a number of issues, so...
So one of the most obvious problem, I would say, would be the restrictions, would be the culverts. And that would be creating multiple bottlenecks as the water flows down. Those would be on our right of way, so we could address those. So in your study, are you gonna focus on addressing and decide to determine if they're too small now and which ones need to be increased?
Yes.
Because if we cannot redredge, which if you look at making the creek wider, now we're taking property, we're gonna have to recontour...
Correct.
Yards.
Correct.
So that's gonna be out of the realm of our budget, for sure. But addressing the restrictions would be. So you're gonna identify which ones are undersized?
Yes, and sometimes, I don't know if this is the case, but sometimes you can do an improvement to a culvert in particular by putting wing walls on the culvert that adds capacity, and it's not a huge expense. I don't know if that would work here without looking at it. Our hydrologist came down. As David mentioned, we drove the whole project. He's also in the study. Also, detention upstream is another thing that would be examined further in the study. And then what jumped out at our hydrologist was the existing conduit south of Sycamore. He just felt that was probably greatly undersized. And he's brainstormed ideas of ways to possibly remove that, and replaced it with an open channel.
Is that the section that partially collapsed?
Correct.
Did you see the clay tile laying around?
And that was probably constructed prior to any upstream development north of Sycamore at all. And so it was never an issue being undersized until development occurred. But that, he feels that's probably gonna have a very low capacity.
Yeah, that's one of the stoppers, for sure.
Yeah.
I noticed in your proposal, you talked about reviewing drainage studies that were done on the new property. So are you going to do enough in this proposal that you will know if that drainage retention area is adequate? If it's been...if there's sediment been in or the volume, the holding capacity to compare? What, if that's gonna be an issue, or are you just gonna acknowledge that retention pond is there?
Just to make sure I understand your question, are you asking on the upstream retention area, the level of study? What was required there? You know, when we say H&amp;H, there's the hydrology part that's actually the storm and runoff part. And then the hydraulics part is the capacity of the structures. So yeah, that's all intertwined, but the hydrology part, you know, determines the storm. And then, yeah, we look at multiple variations of a size, of a detention area, and it's all software-based these days.
Yeah, because there's a difference between what's designed and what's actually built. And if you don't verify what's built, there could be a chance it was even built smaller. So we don't wanna go that, we make an assumption that that pond is adequate and then find out that it was really constructed too small...
Correct.
And not doing its job.
Yeah, we would examine. There's two in that area. There's both related to the school development. There are two detention area ponds already.
And maybe the senior citizen housing?
There could be a small one there that I'm not aware of.
Yeah, because that seems like that's in that tributary area for Whiskey Creek also. So you're gonna go out to the bounds of the tributary area, north, east, and west, south till it ties into where Rock Creek, to the river?
Basically, no, Rock Creek, it would have to be modeled to Rock Creek. The improvements we would look at... The improvements we would look at would stop at Cherry Street.
Okay.
But the structure's basically in, in there at Cherry's.
Okay.
I have a question. This is when I was sitting in the audience, and it goes back a couple of years. And I remember a mention of, and I think it was during either a budget or a capital improvement plan that the city was looking at back in June 30th of 2016. And at that point, you addressed a couple of dollar figures, one in the amount of $128,000, and one in the amount of $134,000. And that involved improvements from Parkhurst to Sycamore Street, and then from Cottonwood to Laurel. And of course, I just, I caught that part of the meeting, but I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't privy to having any other information than what was, what the citizen could actually look at and see. So what, what did that actually involve when you made that presentation?
We looked at a number of, we've looked over the years at a number of different improvements, and most of them have been pretty, I guess, cursory-type improvements. I think we've also done a pretty high-level estimate on a retention basin upstream. But those were storm sewer improvements in those specific areas.
Okay.
They didn't, they didn't really look at modifying the water surface, or what the impacts of the water surface elevation would have, or the improvements would have on the water surface elevation, and particularly in Whiskey Creek. They were more of localized improvements, stormwater improvements.
Would, would some of those have addressed, like the Banda Saz conduit, south of Sycamore?
It did not. As I recall, it did not address that one.
So the improvements would have been, what actually type of improvements? Are you talking about bigger culverts, or?
What our hydrologist thought, south of Sycamore, is totally removing the conduit, and returning that to open channel, and possibly creating a detention basin in that area as well, where the, the, the channel itself would be at a lower elevation to flow, and then as water came up three feet, there'd be additional detention volume in that area, too. And it's just working all that in to, you know, not impact the existing businesses in the area, is the challenge. But we think it can be done, just there's enough, there's quite a bit of open area there as well, so. And it's really to improve the upstream, slow the water down before you start trying to bend back and forth between the railroad. It's a very meandering system, as you know, from that point south, so.
Okay. At that time, in 2016, was there actually anything drawn up that, that would show where the improvements would be made along?
No, that was basically a, just a budget-type cost estimate, based on some storm sewer sized for, you know, sized based on a, on a storm event. It was really more of a low-level cost estimate. There wasn't really much of a study tied to any of that.
Okay.
Like, like this study, to, to, you know, hopefully be the foundation of improvements along Whiskey Creek that would require the core permit. When you get away from the Whiskey Creek area, you can do those improvements without a core permit, and you don't need as in-depth of a study to do those type of improvements.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Just wondering about the price. You know, the $44,000 is a lot of money, but it's just the tip of the iceberg, it sounds like. It doesn't include specifications or drawings for any construction project, and certainly not any construction. Do we have any, any way to even guess what we're talking about for a total spend? I hate to do a study if we don't have the money to follow through.
I understand. And yeah, we really don't have a, have a handle on, on estimate for those improvements.
And that's why there'd be some, be some options, kind of looking at, I mean, the Corps' original study, remember, it was nowadays would be $9 million, and that's opening up that channel south there, and where the culvert is now. But this study was going to give, kind of like, looking at a 10-year event, how that would handle it, five or 10 versus 100-year storm event, how it would handle it. So there will be some options like that, in terms of cost, what we could do, is the way I understand it.
Yes. Yeah, that, I think, you can't speak for the City Commission, but it appears, you know, the 100-year event's just unaffordable. Providing capacity for the 100-year event is unaffordable, so it's really looking at lower levels of service, what, what's the cost tied to those. And I really couldn't, can't tell you without pretty detailed studies.
And the Corps has pretty much eliminated any chance of funding because of.
Yeah, that.
Cost analysis that they look at.
Correct.
They look at the number of properties involved in that, in that area, and they look at what the, the cost would be as far as core money coming in and trying to rectify the situation. So for them, it's a trade-off. It's, for them, it's economically more feasible to, to let basically nature take its course.
Yeah, unfortunately, they.
That's basically what they're saying.
Yeah. Unfortunately, when they look at that cost-benefit analysis, it does, how many houses you're providing improvements to makes, makes all the difference in the world. And there's just not enough to tie back to that $9 million price tag to make the cost-benefit the one-to-one ratio that the Corps wants to see.
So that just forces everything back on to the city, basically. Corps is walking away from it, and it's going to be up to the city to determine whether they're going to be willing, able to, money's to come up with to, to work with some type of a solution that makes the improvement. It's not going to solve everything, but at least a step in the direction that the community can see that we're, you know, we're, we're trying to do, move in that right direction.
And I think that's where we run into not having, back in the '60s, subdivision regulations, and looking at it, at then. We're looking at whole areas developed and added on to a tributary area that the culverts were never modified to allow the increase of flow. And that's why, looking, I agree with you, Gary, the cost is, is extremely high. That, well, not extremely. The study's very expensive to do, but I want to make sure we're focusing in and only doing what we need to do. You know, we can do a lot of investigating in areas that there's no way we can ever accomplish. So can we get the data in a study to look at what we can control? And that's the, the culverts, or that, you know, the worst thing to do is you gather water in a pipe, you release it, and then you try and gather it back up. That area that's got the broken-down storm line, you know, to try and reestablish that line to contain all that development. When you look at the type of construction with clay tile forming a circular pipe, you know, we're, we're back probably in the '20s to '30s at least. Some down in the south part of town that collapsed were brick. So, you know, we're looking at a really old conduit that wasn't designed to carry the water that it's carrying now. So, you know, the one way to reduce the overall cost is just to address the areas that we know that we can possibly afford. And that's what, asking with your studies, because the retention on the, the new construction will be really important. But to go in and say the whole creek bed is, is too narrow, and, well, we're not going to be able to address that. So let's not spend a lot of money reanalyzing the path, but look at the areas that are. So that was kind of where my questions were, were going. Your scope, are you confining it to the minimum to alleviate our problems?
Well.
Or is it beyond that?
So to do this study, to know what benefit you're having, say, at Oak, or near Oak, you really have to model the whole stream. So that, that's why, and I know exactly what you're saying. If I was in your shoes, I'd be asking the same question. Can't you just look at the culvert crossing Sycamore and tell us what we can do there? We can make recommendations at that spot, but we're not going to be able to tell you how that impacts upstream, so.
So we got to know how much water is going through each culvert, and then compare the sizes.
Yeah.
So that's what your study is, to look at the volume.
Yeah.
Of water in that area.
Yeah, it basically determines the models, the entire water surface profile from all of Whiskey Creek, and then you drop in these improvements, and you can tell what impact that has. Now, I mean, you, you can, you're right, we could look, not, we could ignore that, and look at Sycamore and say, let's put in this bigger culvert, and yeah, that's going to improve it. I can't tell you how much.
Right.
But, but yeah, it's going to improve.
Yeah.
What do you think, man?
You know, the only, the only other way to know if it could be done less is to send out RFPs, but then we look at the time delay to do that, and we don't know where we'll be. Will we be cheaper? Will we be the same part?
Right.
If it was my house, I would be, just like the people that live in that neighborhood, I want to know when. And I don't want to have to move my car every time it rains, but get to a point that I know we're secured. So with the cost, the, the schedule, I believe, Sean, you said this was, once it's signed, 120 days, the study would be complete. So then, within 120 days, we'll have a, a result from your study. And then with the study, I guess, one other question. Cost, I don't remember seeing cost projections for the work. That's included, too?
Yes. Yeah, but I believe they're called budget-level cost estimates, but yes, there will be cost estimates.
Okay. And will you put it in kind of a priority if we're looking at, at what work is most critical to be done first?
Yes.
So then.
I know he plans to do it that way. Yes, the most, just like we talked before, the benefit-cost ratio, which ones have the most impact. Yeah, that certainly can be determined. And that's, that's the usefulness of the model. I mean, if, if, like we discussed, if we just dropped in a culvert on Sycamore, even though we think that's the obvious place to do it, there may be some much less expensive improvement that could be made somewhere else that really was a larger impact. So yes, that is the whole benefit of doing the models, so.
And this is kind of combined, Sean and, and Mike. If there's some areas that would be like opening up the drainage where that old storm drain has collapsed, is that possible that some of it could be done with city crews, or would it all have to be contracted out?
Well, in our, in our meeting, we did discuss just that. We will certainly try to work together to see what capacity the city thinks it can do on some of the improvements. And if we can't avoid getting a contractor to do it, it's just going to save a lot of money, especially on that project south of Sycamore.
I'd dare to. I think one of the problems we have is getting them right of way or.
Yeah, that, that's going to be the immediate challenge, is getting, getting right-of-way.
Right. So there's some negotiation with property owners. Right, okay. So we know $44,648. Study will come from utility fund and/or capital reserve five-mill fund. I guess we don't have figures to see exactly where the five mill. I know we keep taking money out of these funds, but we don't see our reports to know where we are.
Yeah, the five mills, as you know, we budgeted for 2019 to take $75,000 out of that for streets, and we budgeted $125,000 as, as the lease payment on an annual basis for the fire truck, which is coming up next, if we were to purchase one. That's what it was. So that still, that leaves about probably 40, 45,000, depending on what the mill rate is exactly. So that's why we, as Mike and I talked about it, you know, it could come out of some utility funds and, and that fund as well. We didn't see anything in the general fund in terms of that, but that's where we think we can.
So are we, I know it kind of goes on, but are we talking about spending 2019 money in 2018 on this?
Well, the, the five mills is there, you know, so.
In 2018?
Yeah, by the time this study's done, we'll probably be into January, 120 days.
Fair enough.
It's kind of a bad policy to spend what you don't have, you know, until it gets there. Commissioners, any further discussion, or ready?
I'm ready.
So again, where's, which fund is this money going to come out of, then?
We call it the capital reserve, or five mills. Remember, every year, the property tax generates five mills for street work and so forth. And like I say, we budgeted, that generates about 240, again, thousand, depending on what the actual mill rate is, the five mills.
Right.
So, and we program that every year, as we did in 2018, we program it in 2019. As far as 2019, we only programmed 200,000.
Okay. Do you know how much is left in the 2018 in the capital improvements? We did the roads.
Out of the five-mills funds? I'd have to check, I don't know if Mike, Mike is aware, but.
I noticed they said their fee is a maximum. I'm sure it'll come in much lower than that.
We do our best.
Appreciate that.
You notice there's no sense on it. They whittled it pretty close.
Yeah, there you go.
Thirty-two seconds.
So the 2018, keep in mind, the 2017 five-mills plus 2018 were programmed for the 2018 budget to support the, the general fund capital improvement plan. So even though there's money still sitting there for that, it hasn't been pulled back into the general fund at this point in time, it has already spoken for. So the money we're discussing right now here to fund this project with, between the utility fund and the, and the capital reserve fund, would actually be funds from 2019.
And then finances, we can spend 2019, we can commit to spending 2019 money in 2018?
We have the funding available in the utility fund. Go ahead and make that commitment today. So that, that's not pulling that money from something that's allocated? It's just money that's in reserve that we could?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
At this time, then, if there's no further discussion, I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize the Whiskey Creek flood mitigation study by Trans Systems in a maximum amount of $44,648.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is consider authorizing the purchase of one aerial firetruck.
As per my RCA submitted, I'd like to get your approval to purchase a 2019 Rosenbauer 101-foot aero platform. This will be using Mercy funds as a down payment, and then the balance we would finance through lease purchase option. This truck was on a hold until October 8th. Somebody had paid a $500 payment to hold this truck. I contacted the dealer on October 8th, and he said for some reason that had been lifted. He went ahead and made a $500 down payment to hold the truck himself, because he's got three other entities interested in this truck, but he's given us this first option to purchase this truck. I think at this cost, we're never going to see this low cost on aerial truck again due to the, you know, the decreasing cost of steel and other building materials. So, and I think it's important for my people who I consider family, citizens of Independence, to have this safety option and have this aerial that will cover the height of all buildings in this community.
So this is a brand-new truck?
Brand-new truck. It's actually going down the line right now, and it'll be ready to pick up in February.
So what kind of warranty will we have on it? That's one of your concerns in the past was also the warranty. So you're satisfied, basically you're satisfied with the warranty?
Yeah, there's warranties on, about everything on the truck.
One of the issues that came up when we were discussing the used trucks in Tulsa, that the issue was with some of the electronics, a certain brand, I think, and then the truck was really undersized for the load of the platform? Have you confirmed that this isn't the same as those trucks?
This is not the same truck at all, right.
But it's got a different lift system?
Different mechanisms, yes, yes.
Okay. What kind of service ongoing that as you have problems with electronics, are they reliable to come and service the truck for you?
Yes, they're actually out of haze cans, the service people. And then also, they will allow us to contract with local people if it's something that can be done local, and then they would cover it under that warranty.
Okay. What you were considering, 300,000 from the Mercy fund?
Correct.
So we're going to have to lease purchase on, what, 597, 896?
Correct.
And how many years were you talking?
I think we're doing, Mike, we're doing the seven-year.
Yes, this is seven over seven years.
What would the annual payment be then?
It'll be right at 98,000, 98,300.
Okay.
My memory is terrible, but I was thinking the Mercy money had to be used on the building. Can be used for any emergency services?
Emergency, yes.
Related to that building, which they did include, I think, equipment?
Okay. I didn't realize that.
It said in the proposal that you had contacted Mercy and they'd approved using the funds for this. Did they send an email?
Yes.
Yes, Jeff sent them.
Okay.
I think over the last several years, I've sent at least three emails on different projects and received approval on all of them. This was the most recent.
Okay. And the payment is going to be from the capital fund?
Right, that five mil capital reserve fund we were just talking about. Which again, we budgeted 125, not knowing where we would be if we done it. So it's just, obviously saves 25,000 lower than what we budgeted.
When's the first payment due after we give the, in our lease purchase?
I believe Mike was going to be going out for bids on, I'll let him.
I would say it'd be the latter part of 2019. It could even extend into 2020. A lot of those, it just depends on how the bids come back in. Some of them are bi-annual payments, some of them are annual payments, and it'd be, well, an annual payment would be from the anniversary of executing the promissory note or the lease purchase agreement.
So if we get the truck in February, we'd be making our first payment following February, probably?
If we went with an annual payment, yes. If we went with a bi-annual payment, then we'd be somewhere probably around October.
So with this one, with the delivery not coming until after the first year, we'll be fine dealing with our budget since it is in?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And they're holding this one right now?
Yes, they are.
And we've got?
Like, quick.
Yeah.
Like, hopefully tonight.
You don't want us to think about it for six months?
No.
When do they need the, they just need $500 to hold it?
No, he already paid that, the dealer did. So we just sign it and then work out the payment.
Okay. So for us to hold it and not pay anything till we get the truck, we just need to sign a contract or tell them we'll take it?
Correct.
And then the money is going to come after the first year?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
We've been talking about this a long time.
Yes, we have.
Been our top priority for a while.
Look how much we saved, what?
Yeah, I like that a lot better than.
400,000 almost?
Yes.
And a new one, from a demo to a new one?
Right.
Yeah.
It's called a demo, that's what they call it, but it's brand-new. It's still on the line.
So.
It's nice that we had the $300,000 on hand from Mercy. When I was sitting out on that side of the table, when this five mil was proposed and adopted, the gentlemen had talked, or two of you had talked about using this money for capital improvements. And have you given some thought of maybe down the road, using this as a funding source for equipment such as this?
And that's what the initial.
That was the talk.
Five mil was for large vehicles and roads to build a reserve. So that capital reserve fund is intended to build up a reserve to purchase large vehicles like this. We already have, we have the 500,000 from Mercy, so that's already in our fund. The 300 is already in hand.
All right. But this five mil that we are collecting from here on out, we're going to designate that and hold true to that for vehicles and for streets. We're going to stick to that and avoid taking money out for other things out of that particular fund, use it for what it was initially talked about and proposed to spend the money on.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, that's what it's programmed for and what we discuss. And every year, when a budget time, that's, we make that clear that what we're allocating, like again, in 2019, I mentioned, we need some for streets and some for this firetruck.
Okay.
We do that every budget year, how we allocate that five bills.
All right, thank you. Well, this cost continues to go up about six or seven percent on these emergency vehicles. So I can imagine what, 15, 20 years down the road, that's probably two and a half million-dollar vehicle you'd be looking at versus what we're paying for today, so, yeah.
And we're fortunate that the first time it came, when I was on the commission, we were talking seven, 750,000. So really, in five and a half, six years, it only increased 200,000. Well, no, 800, you know, 100, 150,000, that's not bad.
Oh.
Those. So there's any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a motion.
I move to authorize city staff to sign the contract for the purchase of the 2019 Rosenbauer platform truck and seek lease purchase bids to finance the remaining balance of the purchase.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
My department thanks you, and I'm sure the citizens will be very happy also. Thank you.
Well, I'm kind of excited too, because if my house catches on fire, I want it to work too.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item, item D, consider authorizing the remounting of one ambulance and the purchase of one ambulance.
Leonard, as you know, healthcare is a vital part of our community. We were devastated in 2015. You know, we have Labet Health here, who's going to be speaking in a minute, that brought an ER here to our community and have provided us healthcare in this community. I can't speak enough for Becky that is out here and the relationship we have and what we're doing in this community. However, EMS, our units are a vital part of that system. We have four units that have very high mileage, and I can go into a lot of the details of it, but what we're trying to do here is get some trucks. We're going to do approximately 600 transfers this year. That's a vital part of what we do with the trauma center at Parsons here, being able to quickly move patients there and to other tertiary care. I have heard your concerns about the five trucks, and I tried to put that in my, and hopefully you understand, just with the three primary trucks, we're kind of switching, putting three box trucks that are running our primary calls, and then our two vans that we can do our transfers. Gives us mileage, better mileage, and keeps our box trucks in. But we're very busy. We were very cognizant of the budget this year. We know things are tight, and that's why we seek to use the 200,000 grant money from Mercy, which we did receive approval from. So.
Yeah, looking at your numbers, the entire purchases, the reboxing and the new ambulance will all come from Mercy money. So there will be no tax dollars.
No tax dollars to this.
Involved in the re-equipping and the new purchase. So are you going to replace the Mercedes with a van? Are you replacing one of the box vans with another?
We're replacing the two 2012 boxes. We're remounting one, and the other one will be a trade-in towards these two trucks, and we're keeping the Mercedes. It does have currently about 78,000 miles on it. We've already put 25,000 miles on it this year, just in transfers of what that truck does. We have some high mileage trucks, but what I'm looking forward to in the future is, and I think Brian will be talking a little bit about this, collaboration to where we can work together and group purchase trucks at lower prices and stuff. So, I mean, we're going to be back in a year or so, because we're putting, we've already put almost 80,000 on our trucks this year in mileage. So, I mean, we are running the wheels off those trucks. So we're going to be back. Hopefully, we, it'll be 2020, but we'll be back again needing to replace a couple, two or three, just because of mileage and what's going. And then we'll see what healthcare does here, what they're able to do as far as, you know, if it expands and patients can stay here or that, or if we continue in the model we are, watching healthcare across America. I think our model is a model that is going to be branded across the United States as healthcare systems change and so forth, so.
I think we are on the cutting edge of what healthcare.
Oh, there's no doubt about it. The money's tightening for everybody, and we've just all got to work together and figure this out.
And I think some of the things that you mentioned in the future, cooperating, sharing, is going to be critical for us all to save and reduce our tax burden on the people. And you said the two vehicles will be trade-ins.
One, one of the 2012s will be a trade-in, and one of them, they'll remount the box on a new chassis.
But the chassis is going away too?
Chassis will go away, yes.
Trade-in.
Right, yes. And what we're going to do with those two trucks, gentlemen, is if this is agreed upon tonight, we're going to put those, the front two trucks, and just run the miles on them till we're done with them, so that we kind of save back our other three trucks, hold a little mileage off of them, and just wear these two out and get rid of them in a few months.
So the 2012 that's being remounted, I'm assuming that's in excellent condition then?
The box is in good condition. We've looked at it, they were here, we've looked at it. It's, we take, Sean does a very good job taking care of our equipment.
So it's good for two, three, four more years or not?
Oh, yeah, it'll last the life of this truck. This is going to be the second remount on this box. I wouldn't probably do it again, but this fit in our budget, this is going to get us down a few years and didn't cost the taxpayers money. So that's what we were, really our goal was, and working with Craig on this and trying to get this achieved.
When we were talking about replacing the aerial truck in other meetings, we kept hearing that it's hard to get it repaired, there's so many issues with it, but that's, we're not having any issues like that with the 2012 remount.
We, no, we don't, we don't have problems on the EMS side, what we have problems with is Ford, just dealing with Ford issues and service. The Mercedes is complicated. We have to go to Tulsa or Joplin somewhere to get that fixed, you know, but it has served the purchase, it's a good truck. But this one will not be a Mercedes, it is a Ford Transit, so it can be repaired locally. And we made that change. But that other one was purchased in a time of, we needed something quickly.
Right, I remember. Happy days.
Yes.
Now with the capital reserve fund and future replacements, this is ideal to have that much money that we can get two vehicles with no tax dollars, that it would be helpful to project out when your next purchase is, so that we're holding in reserve enough that the next two, if you're going to go two at a time, if you're going to go one at a time.
Yeah.
But that we can, because, you know, we're saving considerable interest.
Yes.
And even by using the 300,000 for the firetruck, we're saving substantial interest. The next, the next way to save would shorten to five years instead of seven years.
Yep.
Sometimes the payment doesn't increase significantly, but you save substantial interest funds, and that's more money back in the citizen's pocket too. So that's one of the attractive things of looking at having the 200,000 to make these purchases compared to the lease purchase.
Yes.
Plan. So with this, having the money already, we'll just take that out of the 2019 budget, correct?
Approved tonight, the van would be completed in January, so it would happen in January. They then would take the truck and remount it, and we'd receive it back in about April.
Okay.
Yes, so.
Questions for commissioners?
No.
No.
Thank you, Jim.
If there's no further questions, then I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the remounting of a 2012 ambulance on a 2019 Ford E450 chassis and the purchase of a 2019 Ford Transit Type II ambulance.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is presentation of proposed interlocal cooperation agreement regarding coordination of EMS services by Brian Williams, Labet Health. Brian?
Commissioners, how are you this evening?
Great, how are you?
Good, real good. And so I'd like to start, if there's any Mercy money left, I'd like. And, so I'd like to start, if there's any Mercy money left, I'd like to... Count balance, but anyway.
Oh darn. Just been a little earlier on the agenda.
I think there actually might be six or seven dollars.
Oh, okay. Well, I wanna introduce Dr. Sean Southwick. Dr. Southwick's our medical director of our emergency room, so if you have technical questions, he can, he can answer those. And then Randy Grimmett is the director of our EMS and works with David and Sean. I know the, the hour's late, but if you will bear with me, because I, I wanna compliment David and really the commissioners, the staff, and a lot of people in this room. So the headline that I think David's referring to, and he was, he was really, you know, I think heralded in this article as, as a hero, and I think that's accurate. "How Independence Kansas Survived Losing Its Hospital and What It Means for Endangered Healthcare in Rural Kansas." That was the KLC, Kansas Leadership Center Journal, article about independence. And I wanna read just this brief paragraph. "The Kansas Leadership Center equips people with the ability to make lasting change for the common good, which is what we did here, and it was an uphill walk both ways, many of us know that. KLC focuses on leadership being an activity, not a role or position, and we can all be leaders, open to anyone seeking to move the needle on tough challenges in the civic arena. KLC envisions more Kansas sharing responsibility for acting together in the pursuit of the common good," which is really, I think, what all of us should do as fiduciaries. And so, you know, David's comments were a good segue into why an interlocal agreement. You know, by way of background, 2015 was a tough year for a lot of people in this community. Fort Scott's going through a similar trauma. I was up there, my days were all running together yesterday, I believe, for a couple hours, meeting with their city government. And, you know, it's a feeding frenzy. HCA, I think, is involved, St. Luke's, you know, everybody wants to, to go in there now and be the, the savior of the day, and you know what they want? An emergency room. And what's the county struggling with? EMS. How are they gonna run it? How are we gonna offer it? So I offered us, I hope that was okay, I gave the mayor's phone number, you know, to them, and then also, I think, you know, David would have a lot to offer, and I would like to hope after doing this for a year, Becky Mitchell would. So we are leaders. You know, I have talked to hospitals in other states, and I'm sure you guys have talked to other communities. There's one hundred and twenty-two hospitals that have closed in this country since 2005. It's estimated that thirty-one percent of hospitals will close in the next five years. Interesting phenomenon is, they're not closing in urban cities, they're closing in, in towns like your home. So it's incumbent upon us to cooperate together, work together, and preserve services for the, for the community, for the people that we serve. Mark Woodring and I, in 2016, decided, you know, we really wanted to try to see, how could we work together? Because it's really difficult when you're a competitor, that you try to cooperate and work together. You know, and he and I talked about in an informal conversation, I can't remember if we were at Turbo's or Uncle Jack's, but we talked about, you know, what about, since he had an EMS service, we had an EMS service, we had ER here, he had an ER there, Independence had an EMS service, Cherryville, Caney, what if we just divided the county in half, and he worked with the south half of the county, and we worked with the north half of the county? We never had that discussion really with anybody other than the two hospital CEOs, because ultimately, like David said, the hospital and EMS service is extremely important to the hospital. Most large hospitals in urban cities refer to it as pre-hospital. It's the pre-hospital. It's where the patient's triaged and taken to the closest appropriate facility. There is no ER in the United States that that's your definitive level of care. You go to an ER, you're stabilized, you're either admitted to that hospital, or you're transferred to another hospital. So the combination of EMS, the early interventions that they do in combination and concert with the ER as a team, is what ultimately saves people's lives. If it's dysfunctional or fragmented, or doesn't have a good relationship, then the outcome can be affected by that, and I think we've committed to, to making sure that doesn't happen. But I wanna, I wanna just briefly touch on these things, and I'll give you a copy of it, and then we can talk about the interlocal agreement. Twice Kansas asked the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration to review their EMS in 1994, and then again in 2007, and I just wanna read a few excerpts from that. "Focused on assisting states with the development of integrated emergency medical services programs which include comprehensive systems of trauma care. The Kansas Board of EMS, in concert with the Kansas Department of Transportation, requested the assistance of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration." So here's, here's the things I just want us to think about. The challenges for the Kansas EMS system are also as big as you think. They're as big as the, the hospital challenges, they're as big as city government challenges. "Since an original EMS system assessment in 1994, thirteen years have passed with predominantly cosmetic changes to the system. Bringing about change in any state EMS system requires leadership, consensus, cooperation, resources, and an organizational structure which will follow through until the job is done. The task of leading EMS change in Kansas is not clearly assigned to anyone. The Kansas Board of EMS is the most likely candidate for the assignment, but has not to date accepted that, that charge." And this resonated with me, and I think that's what we should keep in the foremost of our mind. "The citizens of Kansas should reasonably expect that the key stakeholders commit to a common vision of a comprehensive EMS system which is reliable and delivers high-level emergency care across the spectrum of all community settings." You know, there shouldn't be, if I'm in Cherryville, I get a better or worse level of care than if I'm in Parsons, or if I'm in Independence, and vice versa. Physicians will need to come together, agreeing on statewide EMS protocols and regimens for medical oversight of all system components. Two days ago, I spoke to the Kansas Board of Trauma representative, and she wished me luck in our endeavors down here, because to her knowledge, we're the only ones, really, in southeast Kansas, trying to cooperate and work together. She referenced that there's a hundred and seventy EMS services in the state of Kansas, and we've been woefully unsuccessful in getting people to cooperate and work together for the good of the citizens we serve, which is ironic to me. And so then the last couple of things I would just touch on. Utilizing trauma hospital criteria, there are three levels of capabilities, level one, level two, level three. At the time, there were only six potential trauma centers. In 1994, there were only three. Today, out of a hundred and twenty-seven hospitals in the state of Kansas, there's only ten trauma centers serving patients. Two are, I'm sorry, three are level one. The closest level one to us is Wichita or Kansas City. Two are level two, that would be Stormont Vale and another hospital in Kansas City, so Stormont Vale would be your closest level two. There's five level threes, Salina, Hayes, Parsons, Pittsburgh, and the fifth one, somewhere in Kansas City. You know, it goes on to talk about, and these are things that many citizens don't realize, of the hundred and twenty-seven hospitals, only, I think, twenty-five have physicians in the ER, and that includes the trauma centers. You know, a lot of hospitals don't have a physician or a provider in the emergency room. So it was kinda with this background, someone highlighted, it's kinda with, with that background in, in July, when we were opening, that we started talking, you know, you know, how could we work together? How could we improve the service? And so really, for me, we've been talking about probably EMS cooperation with the ER and standardizing things and standardizing protocols. For me, back to 2016, I think for Craig and, and David and I, probably July 2017, and then the last forty-five days, we actually just put an agreement together, and the city's been looking at it. So here's, here's my thoughts and objectives. I'll talk to you later in the morning. What are the objectives that we should try to work towards? Address those key findings. A clear designation of leadership and structure to execute, that's what the interlocal agreement will do, it'll bring professionals together, and we, you're the governing body, I answer to the trustees, they're the governing body. The directive, the policy is to cooperate and improve the level of care that we provide across all jurisdictions. Comprehensive and reliable EMS system that delivers high-level emergency care across the spectrum of community settings. Doesn't mean that all three aren't really good today, just means that when three people come together and share ideas, it always improves the outcome. We will learn from one another, and we will be better. Physicians coming together to agree on statewide EMS protocols. If we have three different medical directors, I don't know if you've ever sat and listened to three doctors, they're usually three different opinions, well argued, well founded, well debated, but you oftentimes don't get real far, do you doc? Right? Yeah. So somebody's gotta be in charge. Improve patient quality through coordination, collaboration, standardization. I mean, you know, you've got an engineering background, I mean, that's what we do. I mean, the more you standardize, especially in emergency medicine, most emergency medicine things are standardized. Time-critical diagnosis are standardized, the protocols. Improve resource utilization and efficiency through coordination, collaboration, and standardization. We could help a lot with, you know, the six ambulances we've purchased. I want Randy to invite you, there's a meeting tomorrow that you should be at. We wanna try to help organize a regional transport. We can't afford the transports to Wichita and Kansas City, neither can you. We cannot sustain these ambulances, putting the mileage on them that we are. So if we can all come together, and three of us, and at some point, I'd like to involve Wilson Medical, because I've talked to Dennis Shelby, and involve Wilson in, in that, and working together, even though they don't, it's a city EMS, but I think the hospital would like to see that happen. Improve coordination, collaboration, PI, performance improvement. We should share information, you know, if, if your EMS, and they're very good, but if they bring in a patient to us, to our trauma center, and they weren't in a cervical collar, and we think they should be in a cervical collar, what have we been open now? Sixteen months, sixteen months ago, we didn't have the relationship where we could've shared that, and we wouldn't have assumed that each other just had it out for each other. Today, we could share that, because we committed that we were gonna work together, and we were gonna trust one another, and if we had a problem with each other, we would talk to each other. We wouldn't listen to people outside, and so that will certainly help. Performance improvement, protocols and training as required by the American College of Surgeons. It is my obligation as the hospital CEO of your only level-three trauma center, according to the American College of Surgeons and Kansas Department of Health and Environment, I am supposed to be the leader, to lead, to make sure those things happen. On page two behind these comments are excerpts from the American College of Surgeons exit. I didn't give them all to you, because, you know, there's always things that we need to work on, but it was interesting to me that they said a weakness, and I'm not sure where they got that, who they talked to, they were here for three days, was that there was a lack of cooperation, or perceived cooperation, and that they recommended we work. Because ultimately, they looked at me, the two surgeons, and said, "It's your responsibility, and don't be dissuaded in that task." So why LaBette Health? We're the only Kansas trauma center serving LaBette and Montgomery County. There are two really good hospitals that also, Kansas hospitals, that support Independence. Wilson Medical does not participate in the Kansas trauma program, neither does Coffeyville Regional Medical Center. They're both obligated to report trauma to KDHE, but right now, they're not a level-four trauma center, or a level-three, or a two, or one. They're a very good hospital, but it takes a lot of resources. We spend about six hundred thousand dollars a year to have the privilege to be a level-three trauma center and take care of patients. We're the only level-three trauma center verified by the American College of Surgeons in the Kansas trauma program, we're the only Kansas level-three trauma center serving these counties, and what does that mean to you as, as citizens? That means that twenty-four hours a day, we have an emergency room physician in the ER, we have a radiologist on call, we have a general surgeon on call, we have anesthesia on call, our anesthesia saves someone's life Saturday. If we had not had them on call, when their pulse ox dropped well below a normal level, they would not have survived, and if they had survived, they would have a hypoxic brain injury. And we have a orthopedic surgeon on call twenty-four hours a day, year-round. We're limited to how many times that we can not have someone. It's called going on diversion. If you're on diversion a certain number of times, you can lose your trauma certification. So on the back of the third page there, you know, David said it well, this is not my information, this is the North Carolina Rural Health Research Program. They've kind of become kind of the national expert on hospital closures. On that next page, you'll see the number of hospitals that have closed. You'll see that they're forecasting nine in Kansas. An interesting fact is Kansas has a hundred and twenty-seven hospitals, Nebraska has around eighty, and Missouri has around eighty. So you can see one of the challenges that, that, that we face. And then the summary page, hospital closures will continue and occur relatively more frequently in disadvantaged communities. Financial stress is a complex phenomenon. Nine percent of rural hospitals are at high risk of financial distress. So that's kind of the background of why do this. I can go through the interlocal agreement, probably pretty quickly, because it's not really that complicated of an agreement. All the whereas's are just whereas's. Whereas you're gonna do this, and whereas we're all gonna do that, they're foundational, they're not obligations, they're foundational. The purpose is pretty clear, it's to really improve the quality and the safety of, of the services that we provide to all the people that pay our salaries. A side, a side thing for me is if I can save the taxpayers money, that's my goal, too. Duties and duration and level of service, you know, it's a one-year agreement. End of that first paragraph, you know, my attorney drafted it, he had ninety days in there, I said I'd really like it a year, because I don't want us to get frustrated and upset about something, and we term. In healthcare, as oftentimes, agreements are longer, so I'm working on an agreement right now that has a three-year term. The statutory requirement if you contract with a physician is it has to be one-year minimum, and if you terminate it in that first year, you can't re-contract. So I don't think a hundred and eighty days is, is bad. And, and the nice thing about termination is if the parties mutually agree, you can terminate it in one day, so it's not a big, it's not a big deal. The other things, it just kinda cites statutes that govern interlocal agreements. Management's personnel, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not changing any of the operational functions of anybody's EMS service. We receive a quarter cent sales tax to support our EMS service. We've really not talked to the county commissioners in depth about this agreement, I can't imagine why they would have an issue with it and jeopardize our funding. We haven't really talked about it to the Montgomery County commissioners, but again, I don't see why they would have any issue with it, because it doesn't impact that, doesn't affect any of that. We have a group purchasing organization called Visient, and so took a lot of work to get their attorneys and then me, because ultimately, if something's wrong in this agreement, I'm the one that'll be held accountable. I'm the one that, as dramatic as it sounds, can go to jail, because I can, as a hospital CEO. Group purchasing organizations, there's a lot of Supreme Court guidance around antitrust related to group purchasing, so this was very specific from their attorneys on how we had to do it, and, and supplies have to be for your own use, we have to have somewhat of some control. A lot of those details will just have to be worked out, how we, we do it. I asked Randy, I said, "How will we do it?" He goes, "I guess our courier will just deliver the supplies to him, and we'll invoice him, and it'll be that simple." So he seemed to think it won't be that difficult to work, and I trust they'll work it out. Here's a key, education and training. Boy, that would be nice if we all trained together, we all learned BLS, basic life-saving, ATLS, PALS. One of the things now that I want to make sure we help get training is criques. I watched a video, you know, that's, that's establishing an emergency airway. If you go ask, if you go ask a lot of ER physicians how many criques they've done, what will the answer be?
Zero.
Zero. They watched a, a film, and that's what they watch in ATLS and stuff. So I, I'd like to see us get a cadaver, you know, it should be expensive, and we let them do it, because the time to find out that you're not proficient, and it's not when somebody's laying there dying. that you're not proficient, and it's not when somebody's laying there dying. So education and training is important to me. Medical director. You know, I think you currently have a medical director. I'm not sure if he works in an emergency room, not sure if he's a Kansas resident. You had a previous one that was Mercy, Mercy, so Mercy was here, so that's pretty logical, that whoever's providing the bulk of your healthcare services, you would work with them. Because I'm accountable and responsible, and the anti-kickback statute, I'm the one accountable for that, I'm the one accountable for Stark, I'm the one accountable for antitrust, more so than any of you, I just think the medical director should come from our organization. I put forth one physician. Staff would prefer not to be that physician, so I respected that. I think we're all comfortable with Dr. Southwick. And the group will then pick the other physician. Because I think there should be a primary and a backup. What if he's on vacation and they've got a question or something? There are really no fees. There's really no compensation. I think you're currently paying $6,000 for your medical director, so that's a savings to you automatically entering into this agreement. It's not huge, but there's a little bit of savings there. You know, could, could the agreement evolve? They would certainly have the latitude, and there could be something that would require compensation, but compensation's really not addressed in here, because there is none. Policies, protocols, procedures, and data. We were going to do these at the same time. We were going to have a five-member board, and it'd basically be Labet, Cherryvale, and Independence, and then two doctors. So that'd be five, five people. Each, each is equally represented in terms of EMS. Cherryvale, Labor Day weekend wanted to move forward. You guys hadn't even seen it, so, you know, I thought it'd be disrespectful. And Brooke and I went back and forth, the city manager, I was like, "Well, do I just go ahead and show it, and then..." But you guys had not even seen it, so I thought it'd be wrong and disrespectful and undermining to Craig and his team. So I just took Independence out of it, and all we did is removed Independence person. What we're doing with this language is we're simply saying at the beginning, it's a four-member board. It's the two, the two, the two doctors, well, it's one doctor, the medical director, Labet, and Independence, and those three will agree on the fourth person, which will be a physician. And then at the end, what we're saying is, we're going to, our intentions of the parties is that they're going to overlap. So we're not going to have, you know, we're not going to have multi, a whole separate board with Cherryvale. They'll just overlap, and it'll be the same people, and so Independence will just add a fifth person. That's certainly subject to the Attorney General's review. I can't imagine why the Attorney General would have an issue with that. Modification, you know, modifications have to be in writing, all parties have to agree to it. The rest of it, I, you know, to me is boilerplate. So I think about an hour before the meeting, there was a, something circulated, a potential discussion, and I just kind of, I give you my thoughts on that. So one question was around consideration that there was no real language around compensation. That's because there is none. The board could work to establish additional services that may require compensation if the board determines it to be beneficial. There was a question, really, do we need the county to approve it? Because you do receive mill tax support. You know, we do too in Labet, but I haven't run it by the Labet county commissioners. Again, I don't think they'll have an issue. I'm fine taking that responsibility. I'm going to send Cherryvale and this agreement to Commissioner McManus tonight, and then I've talked to the county commissioners before. What I would like to be shown in the minutes, because we can't jeopardize your funding, if they have an issue with that, or they're not comfortable with it, or they want a modification to the agreement, then I'll, I'll agree to that. And you can let the minutes show that one party agrees to terminate the agreement that day, if they have an issue, because you can't lose your, your funding, and I understand that. And I appreciate the city attorney pointing that out. As far as indemnification, I, yeah, it gets confusing, and I always, so Mr. Chubb pointed that out very, very well. However, we're all, we're a county hospital, so under the Kansas Torque Claims Act, we can't indemnify anyone other than our employees. And so, they can't indemnify, we can't indemnify each other, so there's no need for indemnification language. Additionally, we've all got our own insurance. My medical director has malpractice insurance. I can give you a copy of that, it's $1 million, $3 million. And then I, you know, I guess a question too is, you know, if that is an issue, does your current agreement, or the agreement with the previous medical director have that kind of language? And then the four-member board, to me, and I've read it five times, it seems pretty clear to me that it's a four-member board. We don't want to duplicate the boards. We could, we can run them separate, but we might as well just say you're appointed to both boards, and we add Independence and Cherryvale, and we start working together, and we do what the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration said. People expect us to work together, they deserve that. So, that is my presentation. I've signed the agreement. It's ready for your signature, Mayor, if you guys so choose to. I would like it backed, because I'd like to control sending it to the Attorney General. I think the city clerk's here, he could sign it tonight if you want to. That's kind of how we did it with Cherryvale. I think they have, under statute, 90 days to approve it. If the Attorney General takes no action, then it's automatically approved.
We do have a request from a citizen to address the commission concerning this, so right now, Debbie, if you want to address the commission, and then we'll continue on.
Thank you. I remember the absolute horror at hearing Mercy's announcement that it was closing its doors. I remember the fearful voices of senior citizens pleading with our city officials to ensure Independence had an emergency room. I remember walking out my front door the day after Mercy closed, and facing the stark realization that if any of our residents needed emergency medical care, there was no such care in Independence. I remember the offers of help by multiple healthcare providers, and remember the huge disappointment when they withdrew those offers because of their bottom lines. I remember a fellow named Brian Williams making a similar offer for Labet Health, and remember wondering how long it would be before that offer too would be withdrawn. I remember sitting literally stunned and speechless after Mr. Williams announced Labet Health would open a new healthcare center for us. But most of all, I remember the thrill of attending the grand opening of our new Independence Healthcare Center. I'm getting emotional here, I'm sorry. And seeing people whom for nearly two years had lived in constant fear of not having a local emergency room, joyfully participating in that celebration. We love Independence, but many of us acknowledge that she is growing smaller, older, and poorer. We understand that leaders of our public agencies, for our good and the good of our city, must make the same acknowledgement and make changes required by it. Although the city has long run its own ambulance services, its records have shown it has been tremendously expensive for taxpayers. Therefore, it only makes sense that our commissioners enter into this agreement with Labet Health, which may help save our tax dollars and enhance the excellent ambulance services we have always enjoyed. We should remember that whatever Brian Williams and Labet Health have promised us, they have delivered to us, despite any great challenges they may have endured in doing so. What's more, they have always demonstrated, they are here for our benefit, not to pick our pockets. Lastly, we cannot forget Mr. Williams, a man of enormous integrity with vast experience in the healthcare field, and a man whose unwavering motivation, determination, and commitment can perform miracles, such as building an entirely new healthcare center for us in less than 18 months. I can't imagine how we could ask for a better partner in the operation of our ambulance services than Labet Health, especially as our beloved city faces an uncertain but ever hopeful future. All that's needed to make this partnership a reality is for our commissioners to vote to make it a reality. Therefore, I would ask that you vote for this agreement, not only for our benefit, but also as a sign to us that you fully understand things must change, and in our best interest, you are willing for them to do so. Thank you.
I didn't ask her to do that, but I'll pay her $20 for that. That was nice. That was very kind of you, and it's, you know, she says, "It's not me." Honestly, I, you were the first person inviting me over to dinner, and I will forever be grateful for that.
You about broke us, too. You wouldn't stop.
About, right. Well, you shouldn't have served such a big steak. But, you know, this was a community effort. Independence Healthcare Center, if I'd have known why I was getting my picture taken, it wouldn't be me standing in there. It'd be, you know, the people's names that are in the building, your friends, your family, your neighbors. This is a neat town. So you guys got a lot, you know, a lot to be proud of. So I appreciate you, your kind comments, but I think there were a lot of people that made this happen, including David, including your EMS director.
Have any questions concerning...
I'm still not clear on the board. When I was first reading it, I thought we were going to have one board for Cherryvale and Independence and Labet, but I don't understand, you're saying they're, they're overlapping boards. Why, why are we doing it that way?
Well, you know, because the Monday or Tuesday after Labor Day, they approved it, and so we separated the agreements. You know, if for some reason it didn't work out, there is a little bit of wisdom in that, that one agreement could term and the other one could continue. So that last, that last sentence in that tries to articulate that basically, there'll be overlapping membership, meaning Dr. Southwick will be the medical director for both agreements. Whoever they, whoever they approve for the second physician will be on both committees. Randy will be on both boards. David, I assume, will be your representative, that would be, I assume, up to your city manager, would be the representative, and then Jesse. And so we wouldn't have four and four, and they would all work together, and that's what Blaine tried to articulate. And I read it, it was clear to me that I've been living this agreement for a while, so I can understand the confusion.
So the two boards will have the same protocols, and, I mean, that's the goal, right?
Yeah, the way it's, the way I want it to function is they're not really, technically, I think, under the interlocal statutes, I think they're formally two separate boards, but they're only going to meet one time. And I asked Blaine, "Do they need to have two separate sets of amendments?", and he said, "No." But again, Jeff and Blaine can work all that out. I just, for me, I just want us to work together. And this formally tells us, you know, mutual aid, it mentions mutual aid. One of the first things I learned when I got here is the EMS directors years ago put a mutual aid agreement together. Problem is, it's not official. It's a bunch of well-intended people. This, this, this formalizes and says to the world, and it's an example, that's what somebody said up in Topeka, that you guys will be an example, us, to the rest of Kansas, of what everybody else should be doing. And hopefully, other people will say, "Well, I want to be part of that. I want to, I want to do that." I think I'd like to see them work for a year to see what we could even accomplish. And I think they've got some ideas, but I don't plan to, I personally don't plan to interfere and set their priorities. I want clinical people to figure out what, what we need to do. All I ask is that they have performance improvement. If we make mistakes, we share information, and we learn from them, and we don't repeat our mistakes. And I'm confident Jeff and Blaine can work out. If, if the Attorney General doesn't like it, which I can't imagine why they won't like it, I'm sure Brooke would be interested in redoing it. The challenge, too, is just administratively, then it's, you know, it's presented again, presented again, and, you know, maybe three people die in the time that we're presenting it, because we weren't already doing stuff together, so.
So with each, each interlocal agreement, it creates a board, but the boards still have the, the opportunity, the privilege to meet together as one unit to form that Coordinative Act, so, in name only, they're two separate due to the agreements, but in function and action, they'll be forming one unit.
I think that would be our intent, and I think Craig, Craig would like to have been one in agreement, and I think I would have too, and, and maybe I mishandled that, but I thought it'd be disrespectful to put Independence in it when you guys hadn't even seen it. And I respect each of you, and, and so, but somebody should have called him and let him know, and Brooke and I, neither one did, so I've apologized for that.
But there is some, some logic in separate agreements, because it's expandable without redoing the whole agreement. If another city decides that, hey, what you got is working, it's going to help us, another agreement can be formed with another board, and those three boards can meet and join and share and work to one, or if there's a fourth, each agreement, whereas, it seems like, you know, in my non-legal mind, it would be more when you identify finitely each group in one agreement, then you have to do amendments, and amendments get misplaced or more confusing.
No, I think you're absolutely, what gets problematic, and why it's really not even feasible, the way that agreement's worded, to include, like, let's say Coffeyville Regional Medical Center, they have a different GPO, and we're competitors. So if we're trying to do group purchasing, then we're in violation of antitrust. And then Lori and I are probably, probably not in the same cell, but we're in, you know, the same prison, you know, in a different wing. But, but like Wilson Medical, because that's a city municipal EMS, we could add them to the agreement and still involve the hospital. I think Kany's a city EMS, so we could add a city. But when you start getting with hospitals and competitors, and you guys have read the news, you know, Aetna, and CVS, and antitrust, they're just, it's very difficult. Compliance is very difficult in the healthcare arena, and it takes really an expert, that that's all that, you know, that's all our attorney does, it's all Blaine Markley does, and Spitzer Fane is healthcare.
Well, I, you know, I agree with, I've read this, and I'm like you, Leonard. I don't have a legal background, but I think we're on the right path as far as the cooperation. You know, with what you presented, as far as the number of hospitals that have already closed, those that are on dire financial straits, you know, we're to a point now to where we need to bend over backwards to find ways to cooperate. Failure to cooperate will take us down the path of failure, and we can't, we, we can't afford that. There's too many issues that affect healthcare, from reimbursement to, they're just a multitude. So it's beneficial to everyone here at the community to find common ground and work forward, and see, move this ball forward. We, we need that.
Thank you.
You know, I'd like to see us go ahead and act on the agreement tonight and get this going, you know, what, like David, you mentioned the ambulances coming on, and some, and Brian talking about ways to share the vehicles and work that path. I think this is the first step in that, and, you know, we got, we have to do something to save our taxpayers' money, and the more we cooperate, the more information we share, the, the better we can become at doing that. So, you know, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and author the mayor to sign this agreement.
Mr. Mayor, could I make a comment?
You can make a comment.
Thank you. And I have to base my advice on the written document. My advice would, to see if Labet and Cherryvale would enter into a three-way agreement. I agree, there needs to be an agreement, obviously. You need to cooperate and all that, nothing wrong with that. But dating back to 1980, Montgomery County does have a mutual assistance agreement, and they have a funding mechanism to share money. And the agreement that the four cities... And the agreement that the four cities sign says, should any city enter into a contract with any other person, entity, or firm to provide emergency medical services within the designated area, then that person or firm is going to be subject to the county's agreement. Now, this is an old agreement that most people here weren't even born yet, but, and I'm not even sure how strictly the cities follow it, but it's, it's there. You know, Cherryvale's northeastern Montgomery County, Independence is northern Montgomery County, LaBette's all of LaBette County, we, we have their emergency room. There needs to be an agreement. It just makes sense to coordinate it with Cherryvale. Now, what Brian said about the boards, I, that's not the way it's written. The, the way it's written is there's two separate boards. They're going to be subject to open meetings, okay? So each board has to vote separately. There's no procedure in this to allow commingling of the boards. So, not that I'm against that, it's just not the way it's worded. And I've looked at Cherryvale's agreement, and I've looked at Cherry's, so. Not trying to put a damper on anything, but I'd like to see a three-way agreement with, you know, all the language is fine, but it, it kind of got rushed on to Cherryvale to hold it. Now we're here, and there's no reason why we couldn't do a new three-way agreement that rescinds the existing Cherryville one and have Cherryville just enter it and do a three-way agreement. I, I think they would do that.
You know, I haven't spoken to her. You know, honestly...
I wouldn't be against the county, at least being a signatory on it, so we don't offend any sensibilities there, you know?
So, on that 1980 agreement, that was kind of the catalyst for a meeting that, that Rick Witson called and the commissioners sanctioned. We're not providing EMS services, as you just read, so, I mean, our attorney's opinion, that, that mutual aid agreement's not applicable to this agreement. And you and Blaine can, you and Blaine can talk about it, certainly. Blaine, his legal opinion, that's all, remember what I said about three doctors? The same applies to three lawyers. But he and Jeff can talk about it. His opinion, because I talked to him tonight on the way over here, was that, no, they're fine. I mean, we don't have anything to hide, so I don't really care about open records or open meetings or whatever. I mean, you're more than welcome to come. But that, that they can work together, they, they may have to have separate minutes or whatever, and that's fine. I'll provide the administrative resources to do that. But, you know, to me, to me, you're going backwards, you know? I mean, they've approved it, let's approve it, let's move forward. If we want to combine them later, fine, they can, we can all have that discussion, but let's move forward, you know? And if we want to move forward, and you guys want to approve this one tonight, and Jeff and Blaine have further discussion, and I think the Cherryville attorney, I think Cherryville has an attorney, include that one. And if the three of them agree that, yeah, that's probably the best thing, then let's do what Jeff said. Let's then term them, but let's start working tomorrow together. I mean, let's start looking at, we just bought, what, six ambulances? In the time that I've been here and spent, how much per ambulance? $250,000 in ambulance? We've got a little experience. We could help David. And it's a lot easier to help David if this governing body says there's a formal agreement to work together. So I, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, Jeff. I'm just saying, let's, let's move forward. And like I already said in the minutes, if the county has an issue with it, the county's the one that called the meeting. So I talked to Rick Witson tonight. He knows, when I left that meeting, David, I said, we're going to work on an interlocal agreement to help Independence and Cherryvale to improve the service in the northern county, and I hope Coffeyville will do the same in the south county. So I will take responsibility to make sure the county commissioners know, as I did with the economic development money, and I'll be held accountable and happy to take that responsibility.
There is a motion on the floor. So is there a second?
Wait, is there a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion a while ago, didn't I? Do you want to read it back?
Yeah, thank you.
I got to get way back here.
That was hours ago. It does say pending a final legal review and... She was playing games over there.
There's a lot of text here.
Watching Netflix.
Yeah.
Last chance.
Sorry, I'm having trouble here.
I always think she's faking it over there.
I just put in here, basically, that the mayor made a motion to approve the agreement.
So the motion was to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal cooper, cooperation agreement?
Yes.
With LaBette Health. That was a motion. So with that motion, I'll entertain a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. I'll sign it tonight.
I'll, I'll hang around.
Next item on the agenda, review protocol, call for forum. Jeff had sent us an email after our last commission meeting discussing possible format and protocol that we would have during the forum, and the resolution, if I'm reading it right, is particularly important for public meetings, such as a commission meeting and our special meeting, but we have the option to deviate from those requirements in a public forum. I think it's important before we go into it that we do set some guidelines. That's what we talked about last time. I don't know if you've had a chance to think about it, but I, I, some of the things that I kind of jotted down after we met was that we, we go with the same format. I think we did it at one of the Mercy meetings, but have everyone fill out a, a request and state their topic on it. Then we would put the, the requests in a container and then draw from the containers to see which ones address. That would be more of a fair procedure for everyone, instead of going by whose hand we see first. But then we could also filter to make sure that we don't get the repeat question of somebody coming up with the same topic. We can get various topics. The time limit for the presentation would be something we would need to look at. We have three minutes to address now. We might want to look at a, a time that included our response, too, so we don't get bogged down on one topic. You know, we, we allow three, maybe go five minutes or 10 minutes per topic. Then set a time limit for the forum, something like maybe 90 minutes, so we have a start point and an end point, and then it doesn't run on. Then look at our, our locations prior to announcing the first one, so that we give a more consistent idea for people that couldn't make one forum, they could schedule to be available, instead of just publishing one date and location, a next date and a location. And that...
Go with several different venues.
Yeah. And go from, you know, if we wanted to have one here, would be fine, but if, if we could do all of them at remote locations, go to where the people are.
Uncle Jack's.
Yeah. Have some hot wings or something, you know?
Would we start, would we also choose different times for each of the three venues or the three forums? Some people have, have stated that for, like, the meeting here, it's early for them to be here at 5:30, but if, if this occurred at, like, at 7 o'clock, you know, they would be, they would be able to make it to point to be here. So would we maybe look at setting that up at maybe one later in, in the evening?
That's a possibility, too.
Possibility, anyway, to where give those that couldn't make an earlier meeting, could make, at least make one.
Yeah.
Have the chance to attend one of the three that, that, that we decided on.
You mentioned a time limit. I think you said per topic, if I understood you correctly.
Right.
Which could be dicey if we have 17 people that all want to express their thoughts on a particular topic.
Yeah.
I mean, because we do want their input, right? That's the reason we're having this.
Right.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure we want to limit the conversation per topic.
Okay.
Per person, I liked what you said, but...
Yeah. Just because we have one topic, somebody else might have.
Yeah, I'm sure they will.
And maybe what we, we look at in that case is kind of keeping the, the time concise, initial presentation, or so we don't get a 15-minute...
Right. Dissertation.
Mm-hmm. Can you think of anything?
I think those sound good. I like the idea of the overall time limit, so it doesn't go on forever, and different venues, I think, is really good, and some kind of time limit per person, three or five. I mean, I think we could go a little longer than at this meeting, because this is a business meeting, and this is, this is a forum, because we want to hear people's opinions, so I think we could go longer than three.
A three is, is pretty short to hear. If, if we're going to respond, and that'll be the difference at the forum, we will want to respond, and some of the response might be, we just need to get back, and we could use part of a meeting to update or, or respond even at a commission meeting. So if that's kind of the general concept we want to go with, I think the next step is for us to try and look at different venues and, and look at schedules. Check and see which days of the week people would prefer, so we can get a variety to conform to their schedule.
Sounds good.
And check venues, and then, and then we'll take it the next step with Thanksgiving and Christmas. I don't know, November and December might be hectic, but we could at least be ready for in January.
Yeah, they're very busy months.
They are. So, okay, if, what's the next, uh, consider dates and venue? Okay?
Sounds good.
Anything else on that item?
No.
No, Leonard.
Okay. Consider authorizing a resolution and proclamation for the Niwala celebration.
This is just the resolution and proclamation we do every year. Basically designates where the locations are and, and things like that. Basically gives Niwala the permission to utilize those city areas for the celebration.
Okay. I, I remember the, the notice we got for the street closure, for the, the overpass painting, and that repair work, we're getting kind of late in October. Is that scheduled changing?
Yeah, they're going to have to delay that and reschedule. The weather didn't cooperate with them.
So they're going to work with Niwala? Okay. Okay, so we've got a resolution and a proclamation. If there's any more discussion concerning the, the topic?
No.
Nope.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for a resolution.
Can we do them both? I move to authorize the resolution and proclamation for the Niwala celebration.
Okay.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Reports? We had the update on the audit, our packets, so...
Sure. Yeah, did you have any specific questions with, with the corrective action that was put in, in your packets?
No. You did get all the questions and all the information to the auditors?
Yeah, for the 2017? Yes, we have gotten that, too. I've, I've reached out to him. We've exchanged a couple of emails, and I've reached out to him by phone. I haven't heard back from him yet, just to get some clarification and, and some dates that, that I can bring back to you all as far as finalizing it, but I don't have that tonight.
So you've been meeting with some of the area towns that are using the same ENCODE?
We have. Yes. David and I have spent some time down at Coffeyville. They use both ENCODE and Laserfish. So seeing how they're set up, and Neil, our auditor, suggested that, it, it was very interesting, and, and they have some really good things that they're doing down there. So we're, we're working on that, trying to incorporate some things in there. I think another part of what I put in the, the corrective action plan update there was an ENCODE expert consultant that we'd actually found out about previously from Fred Grass down in Caney, but visiting with our auditor, and then again with Stephanie Richardson in Coffeyville, they just, they couldn't speak highly enough of Randy Haller, and he's based out of Denton, Texas. So we have reached out to him. He comes into Caney, Coffeyville, Iowa, and some other towns in the area annually, just to go through all the processes, talk about any updates, changes, things that they need, they need to be doing or could be doing that improves efficiency and soundness in their operations, helps implement that, and provides training. So we are absolutely looking at that and, and seeing if we can get Randy in here to, to look at what we're doing and, and provide some, give us some feedback and input.
So is the ENCODE operational? Are you using it now, or is it still kind of debugging and learning the system?
Are, are you talking about from the, the ransomware?
No.
Oh.
Just the general system.
No, the general system works, and, and part of it is just is how we've configured it and how it's been used in the past, some of the procedures that have been in place that we've had to tweak a little bit, then learning curves, visiting with the auditors, looking at everything, just making some adjustments. We're doing that... We're doing that, but there's more to come. But there again, we don't want to blindly do that. We want to be, have some people involved that, that absolutely know what's going on there and the consequences of making those changes.
So is it operational or not?
Yes, it is.
And you're using it?
Yes.
Okay. Because this one's what, three or four years? Or is it, was it four revisions?
There's at least two out there, which with the ransomware, we, we're going to be forced to move in 2019 to a newer version, at minimum the 2018 version. In our budget, we have to go to the version 10. What we experienced with the ransomware attack that we, that occurred back in September is it filtered through our mapping of our network when it got into our system. And that got through everybody that had a fingerprint in ENCODE or accessed ENCODE. So that's what allowed it to take down the whole system. By migrating or updating to version 2018 in our current version, which is version nine, it will work with our Windows 10 update that we're going to have to do in 2020, which is, Windows is forcing our hand onto the update. But the 2018 will still have the network mapping. So our vulnerability to a cyber attack still exists with that 2018 version. So we're, we're also going to get input from Randy Haller when we do get together on him with his opinion on, on moving the difference between 18 and, and version 10. Version 18 is, is much more cost effective, but the vulnerability to a cyber attack is much greater.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. So we had, we had looked at, Craig, you might have to help me here on this, but we had looked at funding of $70,000 for cybersecurity software, but that was for 2019?
Right, that's in the 2019 budget that we were gonna, if, if we had to go to version 10.
Yeah, that's, that's not cybersecurity software. That's actually our accounting software, moving it to version 10, which, which gives us greater security in that area.
Yeah, I mean, that was the major reason to upgrade to 10 was because of the cybersecurity. I mean, there's some other, obviously, improvements and user friendly and so forth, but cybersecurity was the, the major driving force.
And with that, with 10, that gives us a higher level of security than, than what, what we have
Absolutely.
At this point. So that's, that's on track to be implemented in, in 2019.
One of the two are going to, absolutely. We have no choice.
Okay. But the, the funding that we had talked about, that would, that would cover the cost of 10, 2019?
Yes.
Yes.
And then my other question was, and I think I had forwarded that to you, I'm trying to remember what the response was, but it had to do with the quarterly financial statements from 27th, 2017 through the first two quarters of 2018.
Right.
And asked where we were on that, and there was, you might help me out here.
Oh, it might help you out. But it's been, it's been a long process trying to catch up.
Yeah, where, where are, where are we at?
So, so where we're at, when I, when you'd asked me about it one previous time, I thought we were going to be done much quicker. One thing I didn't take into consideration and hadn't thought of when I answered you is the following week David was going to be gone on vacation the entire week. So we lost a week there, then we came back in and the auditor showed up a month early on us. So we got delayed there, but along the way, we implemented some changes in the, in the reconciliation through the process we're having to use right now before we can go to ENCODE. With the auditor showing up on site, we reviewed everything with them, and they asked us to make some additional changes. So with that, David has went into 2017, implemented those additional changes. We do have 2017 done. We'll be updating the treasurer's report with that. We're moving through 2018, and we are on schedule to have everything completed through the third quarter of 2018 by the end of this month.
As the, the, the updates on the 2017, for the year 2017, that's already been turned over to the auditors?
Yes.
Okay.
So all the treasurer's reports in 2017 are done?
The, the final one in 2017 is not, but they have our trial balance smashing up to our reconciliations with the bank.
With the revisions, how do we really know where we are? If we can't get a treasurer's report that's accurate, then how do you know where the money is?
We're putting that together. It's through the trial balance out of our ENCODE system, our accounting system, which is where the, the information comes from in the treasurer's report. So all that information, the treasurer's report is just simply an Excel spreadsheet that we pull the information out of ENCODE to make it a little bit more user friendly for you to view.
So all the reconciliations are coming right?
Yes.
So the fourth quarter, or the, the quarterly reports haven't been published?
No, but as soon as we get all those finalized, they will be published.
And then we did publish the fourth quarter for 2017.
Yes, so we will.
And that's got to be republished?
It, it doesn't have to be, but we're going to. We're going to go ahead and republish the fourth quarter of 2017 and the first quarter of 2018, along with the second and third quarters.
Okay. 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 City board minutes, were there any questions concerning the city board minutes?
I have none. I have none.
Okay. The next item is city manager comments.
Commissioners, I have one thing I'd happy to announce. David Callen received a letter from the Department of Justice. As you know, in 2011, the city was entered into a, what they call a project civic access action with the Department of Justice. At the date of this letter, as I'll read it here, the department is closing the PCA file on the City of Independence, Kansas. Of course, we still have an ongoing effort to address ADA. This doesn't relieve, of course, any of that. But I would just like to re, point out one thing here. It says, "The cit, the department has monitored the city's compliance with PCA settlement since it became effective. Since that date, the City of Independence has submitted documentation, photographs, reports, and other evidence to demonstrate the city's progress in improving access to its programs, services, and facilities." And that's relying on that evidence is why they're closing out the file. And just, I want to read one more thing. "On behalf of the department, it has been my pleasure working with the City of Independence, Kansas, on this important endeavor." And that's in regards to, to David Callen.
Right, yes. I guess he was, but, but.
He's been the prime coordinator and mover on that. That's all I'm hearing.
Okay. Next item, commissioner comments?
Nothing for me. Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. I have visited with county commissioners Coffeyville, Kaney. I've got to get ahold of the mayor in Cherryville, but all of them are interested in a, a joint commission meeting
Wow.
To share ideas and see how we can, you know, just continue like we're, we're talking about the ambulance service, but see how we can share services, share talents, ability, and equipment to reduce our total expenses, so. They were each going to take it back to their commissions and respond and then let us know. But each one of them that I talked to was confident that their commissions would, would be willing to meet to, to see what we could do.
Fantastic.
I, somebody had approached me a couple of years ago concerning construction debris, and now since we're taking recyclables on Tuesday, what I was wondering if we had a, a dumpster for construction debris and then set a, a minimum fee for either a pickup load, a trailer load? And during that time, except construction debris also, then, you know, work out the details of how either they would get a, go to, go to the clerk and pay there and then get a voucher to take. But it, it would be a way to generate revenue for the recycling program so it could offset some of our expenses. And I, you know, when you take a pickup load of construction debris to the landfill, it's pretty substantial. And, yeah, yeah. So, you know, we could set something not that high, but you know, even if it was a $25, $30 when you fill a dumpster, and aren't we contracted by tonnage certain? So, you know, it could equal out, that we could generate a little revenue to help pay for recycling, and if we, you know, would, take it to the next step depending on how we go with trash service, but even purchase some dumpsters that would be for recyclables so that, you know, somebody comes in, they throw their aluminum, their glass, and we just fill up a dumpster and then handle a dumpster load of the material so that you and your crew don't have to go and hand load and hand unload, that, you know, you could, we could get it into a little more automated system. But, you know, I've been struggling with, you do a little project at home and you end up with a half truckload of sheet rock, wood scraps, torn up cabinet or whatever, and to drive over and pay the $70 or $80, I think it, it could, could be an opportunity for us to at least recoup some of our, our money in recyclable and do a, a benefit. Maybe it might even be something that could alleviate some of the trash accumulation around houses too. Maybe that's the next step of, you know, if, if people would be willing to pay to deposit some of that debris that's lining up at the house, I don't know, but.
Got a lot of it last weekend, didn't we?
Yeah, Mayor, we'll, we'll certainly look at that. I, we'll check into whether landfill will take construction debris and what their restrictions are that we have now, and we're looking to see how that could work.
Yeah, I think when I, I took some debris out too. Is it Republic?
Yeah.
Off of 169? Yeah, as long, you've got to watch tires and paint, but you pay the same, so, okay. We've already had our public concerns. So the next item on the agenda is exec, executive session. So the motion for executive session, as I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of an employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA 75 dash 4319 B1. It will resume in 20 minutes, 7:15?
Or 8:15.
Oh. Yeah, 8:15. Man. Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. The commission is back in session. We have no action taken from executive session, so with that, I think I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.